I'm glad to be back, but I know that Shannon took everything while I was gone. I appreciate that. If you would at this time, follow my example and turn off your electronic devices. Appreciate it. And if you choose to speak during this meeting, we have sign up cards in the back of the room. Fill one of those out, get it down to the city clerk, she'll get it to me, and then I'll call you up at the appropriate time. This time, if you'd all stand, we're going to have our city manager lead us in invocation and a pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight, Lord, for this council meeting in a land where we're free, where we pray that you'll watch over us and help us to make wise decisions in everything that we do. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are.
Thank you all. Okay, this time, our meeting is open. We declare the meeting open, and we have a full house, all the city councils here, so we have the quorum, no absences. So moving on to item number four, the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any objections to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. And I'm going to come down, and I'm going to ask the fire chief to join me down there.
If I can, I want to ask the fire chief from the Defenia Springs Fire Department to come up to give a little presentation for one of our guys, Lieutenant Austin.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lieutenant Garrett Miller with the Defenia Springs Fire Department, and I'm here to recognize the true heroes in the eyes of the Defenia Springs community. On the afternoon of Sunday, August 11th, 2019, a defeniac fire was dispatched to a medical assist on Shoemaker Drive for a possible drowning of a six-year-old male. Squad Four, Agent 406, Walt County Fire Rescue Medic Two responded to the scene. As the first unit to arrive on the scene, I was prepared for the worst, hoping for the best, as a frame of a motionless, small body came into my view. My hopes of a better outcome become greater as I saw bystanders already performing CPR. When CPR and the patient care shifted to defeniac fire, all of the bystanders went back to the normal Sunday at the lake, but one of the individuals remained close. It was only after the patient was transported and things seemed to slow down that we began gathering information on what had transpired before medical personnel had arrived. We were told the child had wandered away from his family and fell into the lake at the boat ramp and possibly had been underwater for up to five minutes. This is when Lieutenant Daniel Austin, who was spending time with his family and friends at the lake, kicked into action and performed CPR until our arrival. It was the quick actions of Lieutenant Daniel Austin that made the outcome of this call the way it was. The child was sitting up in the hospital bed, talking two days after being transported, with no neurological deficiencies. Thank you for being this kid's hero and a hero to the community of Defenia Springs.
I'm Jerry Kendall, Executive Director of the American Red Cross in Northwest Florida. Thanks for inviting me to participate in this. The American Red Cross Life Saving Awards Program has a long history. The program has its roots as far back as 1911. The Life Saving Award Program, at its core, since its inception, has always been about providing recognition to those who, in the time of emergency, use their life-saving skills to sustain a life. Red Cross training gives people the knowledge and skills to act in emergencies and save a life. There's a variety of online classes, blended classes, online and in-person, and classroom classes that you can get information about at redcross.org. The recognition certificates evolved from one award into three: a certificate of merit for the layperson, a life-saving award for professional responders, professionals and healthcare workers, and a certificate of extraordinary personal action for the general public who demonstrate life-saving skills every day. All of the awards embody the spirit of the Red Cross training. In the last year, the Life Saving Awards has proudly announced awards to 469 individuals which have saved 210 lives. We're fixing to add to that. On August 11th, Daniel Austin helped save a life of a young child, as described earlier. I'm not going to go through the whole thing again, but by providing the CPR and the training from the training he had been given. Daniel, on behalf of Red Cross, I present to you a certificate of extraordinary personal action awarded to individuals who step in in time of emergencies to save or sustain a life. Daniel, you exemplify the mission of the Red Cross to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, and we commend you for your willingness to help others in distress. Congratulations. Drowning, drowning is a leading cause of death of children. Together, we can change that. It only takes a moment. A child or a weak swimmer can drown in the time it takes to text, check a fishing line, or put on some sunscreen. Death and injury from drowning happens every day in home pools and hot tubs, at beaches in our oceans, lakes, rivers, streams, bathtubs. The Red Cross believes that by working together to improve water competency, which includes swimming skills, water smarts, and helping others, water activities can be safer and just as much fun. Water competency is in a way to improve water safety for yourself and those around you through avoiding common dangers, developing fundamental water safety skills to make you safer and in around water, and knowing how to prevent and respond to drowning emergencies. Water competency has three components. That's water smarts, swimming skills, and helping others. Red Cross Swim Lessons help children and adults gain water safety swim skills, ages six to adult. You can learn more about that at redcross.org as well.
And then also, just add on top of that from the Fire Department, anytime that any of our members go above and beyond, and we actually save a life, pulling somebody up a fire, performing CPR, however that may be, we, as a fire chief, it's an honor to be able to get this award and actually give it out to my guys as it's deserved. So upon saving a life, Lieutenant Austin will receive our Life Saving Medal award and ribbon. The ribbon can be worn with his Class B uniform at all times, the medal will be able to be worn with his Class A uniform. So we're extremely proud, and I thank you, Daniel Austin, for being there at the right time. Thank you very much. And thank you, gentlemen, for putting in for the award and being there as well. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Let me just conclude this by saying Lieutenant Austin is just one example. Fantastic. The fire department, we have you to credit.
Yes, sir.
Amen. Yes.
Okay, moving on to, we have nothing on the items six or seven, so we're in public hearings. Item 8.1. And pursuant to Article 4, Chapter 102 of the City Code and Florida statutes, I now declare the public hearing open to receive oral and written comments into the official record concerning the consideration of transmittal and adoption of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-5 ESR. The adoption of the amendment will be accomplished by the approval of Ordinance 1719. For the record, the council asks that all speakers identify themselves by name and address. We also ask that speakers confine their oral remarks to the time allocated and recognized by the chair. Written comments received by the staff should be presented to the council in excerpts listed in the official minutes. The Community Development Services staff will speak on behalf of the city. I now call upon the city clerk to recite for the record legal notice data provided to the public concerning this public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, publication of the legal notice for the ordinance was accomplished in the Cresview News Bulletin Wednesday, October 14th, 2019.
As noted, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-5 ESR will be accomplished by Ordinance Number 1719, and I now ask the city clerk to read the ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Number 17 reads by title, "An Ordinance of the City of Cresview, Florida, Amending Its Adopted Comprehensive Plan, Providing for Authority, Providing for Findings of Fact, Providing for Purpose, Providing for Changing the Future Land Use Designation from the Low-Density Residential, Medium-Density Limited Residential, Medium-Density Residential, and the Commercial Future Land Use categories to the Mixed-Use Residential/Commercial MX-RC Future Land Use Category on Approximately 25.7 Acres More or Less in Section 17, Township Free North, Range 23 West, Providing for Future Land Use Map Amendment, Providing for Several Building, Providing for Scrivener's Errors, Providing for Liberal Interpretation, Providing for Appeal of Conflicting Codes, and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the first reading of ordinance Number 1719.
I now ask for a presentation of staff reports and comments, if any, whether written or verbal. The chair recognizes the Community Development Services staff to present any staff reports or comments.
Good evening. Due to the fact that we are time constrained this evening, I'm going to just briefly go over some of the high points. The staff report is in front of you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after. The proposed amendment affects the 25.71 acres as indicated. This serves to affect 78 individual parcels. The Comprehensive Plan supports this change, and the staff has received no public comments that serve to impact this proposal at all. There were a few phone calls worried about any potential city development, like, why were we doing this? And once I indicated that there was none, other than the rezoning and comprehensive plan changes, the citizens seemed satisfied with that answer. I will briefly go over the findings of fact and my conclusion and staff recommendation. The proposed future land use map amendment and zoning district designation change will provide a relative use buffer between the more intense commercial uses along the Highway 85 corridor and the low-density residential uses to the east. The request of Comprehensive Plan Amendment is consistent with the above references and will not be a detriment to surrounding property. No adverse impacts to levels of service standards nor to environmentally sensitive lands have been perceived. The proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment satisfies the requirements of the city's adopted plan, Comprehensive Plan, and the Land Development Code. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment should be approved by the Department of Economic Opportunity if supported by proper documentation and council intent. Based on the analysis above and the findings of fact, staff recommends approval of the application for Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the transmittal of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-5 ESR or Ordinance 1719? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this transmittal? Seeing none at this time, I will close public input, except for direct questions by members of the council. Members, do you have any comments or questions? Seeing no comments or questions, at this time, I call for a motion and a second.
Mr. President, Chair, I move to adopt Ordinance 1719 on first reading and move to second reading and authorize the mayor to transmit the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunities for review and comments.
Right, it's a second. I have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 1719 on first reading and move to second reading and to authorize the mayor to transmit the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for review and comment. Is there any further discussion? Then at this time, I call for a vote. Call for action, please, to vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Just real quickly, before we move on, I wanted to note that this is one of the items that you brought up and discussed during your strategic planning, and what it does as you look at that map is it takes and begins to create those concentric zoning districts that we talked about. So we won't belabor it because of time, but I just wanted to show you that this is one of the steps that's directly related to this.
Very good. I now declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to public opportunity on council propositions, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the city council on anything on our agenda for this evening? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda. Is there any objections or anyone that wants anything pulled from the consent agenda? Any objections? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. That will be addressed by?
Those all consent.
Move to 11.
Excuse me?
Move to 11.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I see what you're saying. That was part of the consent agenda. My bad. My bad. Okay, moving on to number 11, resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution 20-01 reads by title, "A Resolution by the City Council of Cresview, Florida, Recognizing Florida City Government Week, October 21st through the 25th, 2019, and Encouraging All Citizens to Support the Celebration and Corresponding Activities and Providing for an Effective Date." This is Resolution 20-01.
Okay, any questions from Madam Clerk on the resolution? To explain to the public is exactly what it says, and that is, across the whole state of Florida, during certain week of the year, we recognize city government, and we'll be doing that beginning on 21st of this month, and we'll go into detail a little bit later on in the meeting when the city manager talks about it. So is, can I have action on this resolution, please?
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
I'd like to move that council adopt Resolution 20-1.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the council to adopt Resolution 20-01. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Resolution is so passed. Okay, ordinance is on second reading. Let me get down to here. Madam Clerk, would you read Ordinance 17-21, please?
Ordinance 17-21 reads by title, "An Ordinance Annexing to the City of Cresview, Florida, 62.5 Plus or Minus Acres of Contiguous Lands Located in Section 35 and 36, Township 3 North, Range 24 West, and Being Described as Set For Herein, Providing for Authority, Providing for Land Description, Providing for Boundary, Providing for Land Use and Zoning Designation, Providing for Amendment to the Base Land Use and Zoning Maps, Providing for Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Providing for Filing with a Clerk of Circuit Court of Oaklissah County, the Chief Administrative Officer of Oaklissah County and the Florida Department of State, Providing for Several Building, Providing for Scrivener's Errors, Providing for Liberal Interpretation, Providing for Appeal of Conflicting Ordinances, and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the second reading of ordinance Number 1721.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Your staff report, please.
The council has heard the staff report and has heard the annexation multiple times. I would just like to add that staff has not received any additional public comments that have not been read into the record to this date. I can answer any questions you may have.
Councilmembers, any questions, comments? Can I have action, please?
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
I move to adopt the ordinance 1721 on first reading and send a second.
Right, it's a second. I have a motion to accept the ordinance 1721 and set up a second reading. Any further discussion?
Am I confused? I thought this was the second reading. Or am I confused?
Yes, okay.
It is the second reading.
Accept on the second reading, yes.
Okay.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Here's one on first reading. Madam Clerk, would you read Ordinance Number 1693, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Number 1693 reads by title, "An Ordinance of the City of Cresview, Florida, Providing for the Rezoning of 62.5 Acres More or Less of Real Property Located in Section 35 and 36, Township 3 North, Range 24 West, from the Oaklissah County Rural Residential RR and Agricultural AA Zoning Districts to the Single Family Dwelling District Zoning R1, Providing for Authority, Providing for Updating of the Cresview Zone Map, Providing for Several Ability, and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the first reading of ordinance 1693.
Staff report, please.
Yes, the ordinance in front of you, actually, I wanted to ensure that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment was read prior to the rezoning, but I think it'll be fine. This amendment, or this, excuse me, this rezoning you have in front of you, is applying the necessary zoning designation to the lands that the council just approved for annexation. The proposed use is a single-family residential subdivision. It meets all the, I must say that we have not actually received a development order application for the subdivision. This is simply just the rezoning and comp plan exercises that must be finalized prior to that action. That being said, the rezoning meets all of our current standards, and if you have any questions, again, I'm here to answer them.
Any comments, questions? Can I have action, please?
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
I move that we adopt the city council adopt ordinance 1693 on the first reading and send to the second reading.
Second.
We have motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 1693 on first reading and send a second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We're now on to ordinance 1720. If you would read that for us, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance Number 1720 reads by title, "An Ordinance of the City of Cresview, Florida, Providing for the Rezoning of 25.7 Acres More or Less of Real Property Located in Section 17, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, from the Commercial C1, the Single Monk and Monk family dwelling R2, and the Industrial I zoning districts to the Mixed-Use Neighborhood Commercial District zoning MX-NC, Providing for Authority, Providing for the Updating of the Cresview Zone Map, Providing for Several Ability, Providing for Scrivener's Errors, Providing for Liberal Interpretation, Providing for Appeal of Conflicting Codes, and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the first reading of ordinance Number 1720.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Staff report, please.
Yes, so what you have in front of you is the rezoning that will implement the previously reviewed Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This applies the mixed-use neighborhood commercial zoning designation to the lands, as indicated previously, on the 25.7 acres, including the 78 affected parcels. There is one point of interest that I feel necessary to make in keeping with our time constraints. The proposed change will create a non-conformity out of an existing use. The proposed mixed-use neighborhood commercial land or zoning district does not allow for warehouse uses, excuse me, and there is an existing warehouse use there, although it has been made, staff has been made aware that the owner of that property may be inclined to change that use anyways. They may have questioned city staff in the past about doing such. So he was notified, they were notified as required by law, and we have heard no comments from him or any other property owner in the proposed areas. And I will close by saying that rezoning does meet our Comprehensive Plan requirements and Land Development Code.
Council, any comments, questions? Seeing none, I call for action, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Walker.
I make a motion for the approval of the proposed zoning changes and recommend that the city council adopt ordinance 1720 on the first reading and send to the second reading.
Second.
I have motion and a second, the city council adopt ordinance 1720 on first reading and send a second reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance Number 1722, please?
Mr. Mayor, ordinance Number 1722 reads by title, "Ordinance of the City of Cresview, Florida, Amending Its Adopted Comprehensive Plan, Providing for Authority, Providing for Findings of Fact, Providing for Purpose, Providing for Changing the Future Land Use Designation from Oaklissah County Future Land Use to Low Density Residential Future Land Use Category on Approximately 62.5 Acres More or Less in Sections 35 and 36, Township 3 North, Range 24 West, Providing for Future Land Use Map Amendment, Providing for Several Ability, Providing for Scrivener's Errors, Providing for Liberal Interpretation, Providing for Appeal of Conflicting Ordinances, and Providing for an Effective Date." This is the first reading of ordinance 1722.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Staff report, please.
Again, this is something that you all have heard on numerous occasions. Additionally, I believe I forgot to mention it before, this particular Comprehensive Plan Amendment has gone to the state and returned. It was part of an amendment cycle. The cycle was necessary to break apart. This is one of those projects, and it's now moving forward. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions, comments?
No, sir.
Call for action, please. Yes, go ahead. Okay, anybody in the public would like to comment for or against this amendment? I mean, this, yeah, Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Anybody in the audience?
I just have one question.
Would you please come up to the podium, identify yourself by name and address?
I just had one question. I still don't know.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm [inaudible]. Anyway, the only thing I wanted to know was the purpose of the annexation. I still haven't gotten an answer to that, that's all.
Yeah, and I don't believe we have an application for development order. We got.
So it was just annexation for the sake of annexation?
With disease, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? Okay, I call for action, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 1722 on first reading and send a second reading.
Second.
I have motion and a second to adopt ordinance 1722 on first reading and send a second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have no action items, so at this time, anybody in the audience like to address the city council on any topic? Anybody in the, this is still the city council meeting, not the workshop. Does anybody in the audience would like to address the city council this time?
Is this the correct time to bring out the ordinance or the change about moving the distance between [inaudible] businesses and [inaudible]?
You can, but that's the next meeting, the workshop. It'll be more appropriate at the workshop, which is following this meeting.
Oh, [inaudible].
Okay? All right, thank you. at the workshop, which is following this meeting. Okay? All right, thank you. Okay, seeing no comments, we move on to comments from the mayor and the council, starting with Councilman LaBeuf, you have anything?
I have none, thank you.
Councilman Rensich? Councilwoman Brown?
For what? I don't have anything.
Councilman Blocker?
No, in just a moment.
Okay.
No, sir.
Mayor Pro Temp?
No, sir.
The only thing I would, I'm not going to talk about the city government week, you do that at the end, but are you going to be available, Mayor Pro Temp, to cover for me if I can't make it to the OWTPO meeting on three P M. Thursday, because I'm coming back from Tallahassee? It's in Dufuniac.
What time?
Three P M. Community Center. If you can just be on call, what I'll do is I will let you know if I don't have a meeting on Thursday morning, I'll be able to make it back for Dufuniac, but if I do, I might have to call on you. You'll be available.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
I'll be free to go there for two, so I can get there in an hour or less.
All right, you sure you can do that? All right, good enough. Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Turner, you have anything for us?
Yes, sir.
All right. City manager, I know you do.
Yes, sir. And I'll make it brief also. You see in the agenda item under me and actually up on the board there are activities for city government week. Please remember and make as many of those as you can as council members and elected officials. It gives us the opportunity to interact with our community. Monday, the twenty-first, we're going to have an open house with all of our volunteer groups and our department heads at tables over at Lawyer's Hall, and we'll hold a brief council meeting, just so that people can see how the process works. On October twenty-second, we have pancakes and books from ten A M. to noon. The library will be serving pancakes, and council members will be checking books out, not to read themselves, but checking other people out to read.
Could we stop there a minute, City Manager, and see if we can define that, because everybody that's in town is able to make it. So, let's set up the time. We don't have to do an hour because we have seven people available. So, we can either do two people at a time for an hour, or we can do a half hour. What do y'all want to do?
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
I just got a notice today. I got a meeting on that day, Tri-County Partnership.
Okay, you're out. You're off the hook. And Cindy, you need yours to be late to make it back from Full Wall Beach?
Yeah, after, around three is fine.
Okay. While we lock you in for the four o'clock, to be sure, okay?
Wait a little. Half hour.
Any preference on the time?
Four is good.
Okay, Cindy just took four. Can we give you a three?
If you insist.
Okay, would you write that, somebody write, would you write that down for me?
You can fill me in wherever needed.
Okay, and I'll do it, I'll do it starting at noon time.
Brown is what time?
Betsy, you going to join us when?
I'm going to join you at noon.
Hmm?
I'm going to join you at noon.
And you?
I'll be there.
Twelve to five? All right.
I'll be there. I'll pick up where you're going.
Okay.
When I personally told you, I'll be out of town.
Just want to make sure we got it all covered.
Blocker was three, right?
Right.
So, we have, we have the mayor, the mayor, Ms. Roy at noon. We have Andrew at one, Ms. Rensich at one. I'll take two. Ms. Blocker take, I mean, Ms. Brown will take, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Blocker takes three, Ms. Brown takes four.
Got it covered. So, if you, if you have any books you need to check back in and check out, someone, there will be adult guidance to help us out, but we'll do, we'll do that.
I don't know if they'll make it back in the right spot.
Okay, go ahead now. I interrupted you for that.
Okay, so, and on Wednesday, October twenty-third, we're going to do a Facebook live Q and A from here with CCTV. We will be available. You can come here and ask questions, or you can do it through Facebook. I'll help moderate the questions, and we'll get them to the council. And it's going to be cool. It should be, it should be an interesting event. But, you know, the way council meetings work, at the end of a council meeting, you're really just making a statement, not so much getting an opportunity to ask questions. So, this will give the opportunity to ask questions. So, it should be fun. And then, on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, the staff will be doing training and team building throughout the day, so we're making arrangements for that. On Friday, October the twenty-fifth, the city council members will be waiting tables between eleven A M. and one P M. And we're doing that at Desi's, so they're really just picking up tables. And then, we have the Fall Festival on Saturday between one and six, and we do United States. We have a busy week, but it gives us an opportunity to interact with the public, so it should be good.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
And I'd like the city manager fellow to mention it, but Mr. Blocker, no tips we accept.
Really?
But they still need the tip, because the people that actually wait tables, they can tip them, just not us.
Some people really do the work.
Yeah, some people actually run off that.
All right, is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
All right. Then, this meeting is going to be adjourned, and stick around. The workshop will begin immediately thereafter unless we need a latrine break or something. Okay? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.